I have 7:00 PM. Mr. President? Sure.
All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. This is the time for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. It is 7:00 PM, Monday, March 21st, 2016. We have our call to order. Roll call, please.
All councilors are present.
Item 2 is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3 would be Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. We have done, therefore we will move on to Public Hearings, which is item 4. Item 4A, please.
Is a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of West Grand Avenue right-of-way in the city of Beloit?
Madam Director.
The proposed area to be vacated is unplatted and approximately 5 feet by 25 feet. It is located adjacent to 108 West Grand Avenue. The building encroachment appears to be the result of a discrepancy between the southerly line of West Grand Avenue, it was platted in 1847, and the build-to line used to construct buildings on 108, 110, and 114 West Grand Avenue. Essentially, the West Grand Avenue right-of-way is wider than shown on the Hackett's Addition plat. The property owner has petitioned for this vacation in order to clean up any resulting title issues. This did go to Plan Commission at their last meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of this vacation.
Thank you. First call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Bill Henderson, 1705 Emerson Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. I represent Karen and Brody Christensen. We're sitting right here. They own 108 West Grand, which is the Totally Tan Building. And Brody, if you want to bring the pictures up, it's probably hard to see from where you are, but this dark line is the plat of vacation. That would be the area where the front of the building encroaches on the right-of-way. The right-of-way is back here, and as Julie indicated, it was apparently laid out in 1847. These buildings, this is the Totally Tan Building. These are the buildings next to it, the bike shop, and there's this beauty salon. And I took a picture so you can see that all of the fronts of the buildings line up about the same, so they're all in the right-of-way. And this is another picture of the same thing. The Christensons have entered an agreement with Hendrick's Commercial Properties to sell the building to them. Part of the purchase agreement was that Hendrick's had a survey done, and lo and behold, the legal description only went out to here and didn't cover this part here. So in order to go ahead with the sale, we need to get the 5 feet out here vacated so that we can have clear title or pass clear title to Hendrick's. That's basically what we're asking. The Plan Commission voted to recommend it to the City Council, and we're hoping that you'll approve it as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Moved by Lubkey, second by Kincaid. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. Item 5 is Citizens' Participation. We have reached the point on the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act at any request this evening unless your items that you're speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting or may refer the speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks. I do have one person, Mr. Dennis Hughes, wishing to speak to us. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. My name's Dennis Hughes. I'm the staff representative for ASME Local 643, representing transit workers. I actually live in Milwaukee, 144 North Jefferson Street. I'm here today, unfortunately. We've tried to avoid reaching out to this council, reaching out to the press, reaching out to anyone beyond the city administration to deal with an issue we're having with an employee. I've represented public workers in eight counties and over 30 municipalities. I've never seen an employee be targeted the way the city of Beloit has targeted Russ Arons and attacked his family for over two years, about two and a half years almost now. They've been trying to get rid of him, trying to fire him, and now just trying to make his job as hard as possible, his life as difficult as possible, so he just quits. It's really sad to see, and I hope that the city council will do something to alleviate the situation. We had a, he was terminated in the fall of 2014. We went through the grievance process. For the first time ever during that grievance process, the transit director, Michelle Gavin, did not meet with Russ Arons, her employee. Every other time that there was ever a grievance, she always met with the person. She did not meet with Russ. We went up to the next step. Greg Boyson did not meet with the employee, just denied our grievance for the termination. We went up to the next step, which was Larry Arft, who was the last grievance he had before he retired. He refused to meet with the employee. The only time that I know of that he's ever not met with the employee or an employee's representatives. So the termination stood until we filed for mediation arbitration. We went through mediation. The mediator couldn't believe what the termination was, so we didn't come to an agreement during mediation. We went to arbitration. The arbitrator, this is almost a year after the termination, finally came to a decision and found that the city did not fire Mr. Arons with just cause. So he was reinstated to work. One problem was that the arbitrator did not give, make him whole. So he spent an entire year without pay by paying his Cobra Health Insurance for his family. His family was single income for that time, except for whatever odd jobs he could find throughout the year. So when we won the case, we were pretty excited, even though he didn't get back pay, that he would be reinstated. He was the highest seniority part-time worker, part-time bus driver. So when a full-time position opened up, which happened before he came back to work, he was excited to apply for that job, and he expected that he would be given the full-time position that he'd been waiting over five years for. When he submitted his application, he found that the city had unilaterally changed his date of hire. Our contract clearly states that for part-time bus drivers, your seniority is based on your data-
Please summarize, sir.
I am. Your, for part-time bus drivers, your seniority date used to be based on accumulated hours of seniority. We changed that in the 2014 through 2017 contract to alleviate any problems with employees. Part-time bus drivers were jockeying for position. They're all within 100 hours of each other for seniority for that full-time job that everyone wants. So we changed it to date of hire. He had the highest seniority of the part-time workers. The city unilaterally changed his date of hire by a year.
Sir, you're well over your time.
Okay. And so he was not given that full-time position. We filed a grievance. Again, Ms. Gavin did not meet with this employee. Again, Greg Boyson did not meet with this employee. Again, Lori Luther did not meet with this employee. Lori Luther set up a meeting with us, canceled it. We asked her multiple times to meet with union leadership. She refused.
Sir.
Multiple times. She has never met with, she has never met with transit workers-
Sir.
-her entire term here so far.
We're done.
So we hope that you will alleviate this problem. We have 33 days before we have to file for mediation.
You're giving 3 minutes, you're done.
We have to, we have to spend at least $5,000 to go through arbitration. Our union treasurer, our union treasury cannot take this. We cannot spend $5,000 more for, we cannot spend $5,000 more to deal with a clear contract violation.
You've been, you-
So we can't stop attacking the union.
You've been asked to step away.
We have until the first week of April, so I hope at your April 4th meeting you will fix this problem, and we can move forward. Seniority is for employees to decide how to determine promotions.
Sir, you're done.
Employees have decided to-
Would somebody please escort this gentleman? All right. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak under Citizens' Participation? Second, and, second call for persons to come forward and speak under Citizens' Participation? Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under Citizens' Participation? Hearing none, I'll close Citizens' Participation. We will move on to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda, all items considered under the Consent Agenda are considered routine. It will be enacted one by, by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. Counselor DeForest, you wish something removed?
Thank you, please. Yes, I'd like to remove item O.
Do we have any other councilors wishing to remove something from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, the Consent Agenda will consist of items 6A through 6N. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Lubkey, second by Kelly. All in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 6O.
Is a resolution approving the final pay for public works contract C-15-21 Rock River Bank Armoring.
Mr. Boyson.
This project installed riprap along the west bank of the Rock River from the dam to Liberty Avenue. The requirements of the contract have been completed. The awarded contract amount was $231,231.56. Quantity increases and change orders were $45,150.14, resulting in a final contract value of $276,381.64. The city engineer, the city attorney, and the director of accounting recommend that the final payment be made to the contractor, Bajorine Limestone Inc., in the amount of Funding for the full final contract amount is available from the Community Development Black Grant Emergency Assistance Program, and approval of the, of the resolution authorizing final payment is recommended.
All right. Counselor DeForest?
Thank you. I just think it would be helpful for the public's information, this is quite a significant quality increase in change order amount. It's like 20% of the project cost. Could you please explain why the excessive quantity increase in change order occurred?
When we do the riprap on the, the bank erosion control of this nature, we, we do an estimate of the quantity required in advance based on, basically our past experience. On the west bank in this area, though, the, the river has kind of meandered its primary bed into this general area adjacent to the, to the bank. So then, when we put the erosion control on the bank, it is required to go down and seat at a relatively alleged area or the bottom area of the bank. So then, with this being deeper than anticipated, it was more limestone required to get the seated footing for the erosion control riprap installation.
All right, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve item 6O?
Motion.
Moved by Lubkey, second by Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I make a mistake? Was, okay, amend that to Counselor Hendrick's making the second. I missed that. Sorry about that, Rich. Yeah. Okay. All right. Item 7 are ordinances. Item 7A.
Is an ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter 17 of the Code of General Ordinances for the city of Beloit pertaining to the regulation of solid waste, first reading.
We'll be handling the staff report for both 7A and 7B, I understand, at the same time?
Yes, I have one presentation actually for both of those plus the solid waste fees that are coming up, and I'll just do one, and then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so beginning June 6, you are all aware, the city will be changing its entire solid waste management program in order to implement automated trash and recycling collection. This overhaul required a, a number of changes to the existing municipal code that regulates solid waste and recycling, and ancillary issues related to solid waste storage, management, and maintenance. As part of the automation, the city is also going to provide for dumpster rental, both 4 and 8 yard, and the other fees will stay the same, so that is the only fee change. Solid waste staff, the actual team that you saw here, has been conducting public information sessions throughout the city. We've had press releases go out. We've got a couple commercials that will hopefully be running, and we are doing additional things to try to get the word out. I think the biggest word will get out when the carts are delivered and the information in the cart is there, and those that have ignored automation or have been too busy with their lives to think about it will see what are those and open it, and there'll be educational information in there. So the key issues with my presentation tonight was, Chapter 17 was completely rewritten. It had to be. The repeal and recreate of this chapter does provide clear direction to the city residents about the new automation of, of collection and associated regulations related to storage, management, and collection of solid waste. Various provisions of Chapter 7 were changed simply really to reference Chapter 17 and to address those provisions within Chapter 7 that regulate the storage and maintenance of the solid waste containers. Let's see. Like I said, public education has been ongoing, so I believe, and the staff believe that this is, conforms to your strategic plan, the city's and the mission. Transitioning from manual to automated collection with solid waste truly focuses, focuses on sustainable stewardship. The program promotes recycling while at the same time emphasizes wa, waste reduction, so we assume that we will have an increase in recycling and we'll have a reduction in solid waste. Plus, it is managing our fuel much better with the reduction of four vehicles. So as this relates, we will have a reduction of four diesel trucks to sustainability, which will reduce the amount of fuel we're using. We will have a reduction in fuel emissions because we're removing four trucks, and the program, like I said, is expected to increase recycling, and our recommendation is to approve the proposed ordinances and fee resolution, and the city is proposing, like I said, the change is the fee for the dumpster rentals, and other, other fees will all remain constant. I also want to mention one more time that converting to automated solid waste and recycling collection really secures that fund financially for future years without having to increase fees. And, that, any questions?
Let's, in order to get that on the table, let's go ahead and have a motion to approve 7A.
So moved.
Moved by Kincaid.
Second.
Second by DeForest. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh, the information that's going to accompany the carts, will that be available in Spanish as well?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, did information go out to the Property Managers Association? It seems like it would be-
Yes, and we've done a presentation to the association.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. It's the only questions I have.
I think you're going to find that on that day that that shows up, you're going to, you're going to be very, very busy.
I think, I think you're right.
And I'm holding busy, too.
Exactly. So, all right then.
Thank you.
Do we have a, we have a motion and a second? All in fa, do we have any other questions or comments from councilors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of approval, or first of laying this over to the, to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item is laid over to the next meeting by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 7B, do we have a motion to lay over?
Motion.
Okay. Moved by Hendricks and second by Slonaker. Do we have any additional questions or comments on item 7B? Hearing none, do we have, all in favor of laying this over to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We've laid that over by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 7C.
An ordinance to amend Section 15.01 and to repeal Sections 15.07 Sub 2 and Sub 3 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit pertaining to the regulations of knives. This is second reading.
Ah, yes. Madam, City Attorney?
As Ms. Stottler indicated, this is the second reading of the ordinance that addresses the city ordinances related to the knife, knife regulation. State law was passed recently that prohibits the city from regulating switchblade knives and then regulating knives in any way that's stricter than state law. So this is just taking care of the city's ordinances related to that and making sure that we're in compliance with state law.
All right. Thank you. And Counselor Lubkey.
I just want to reassure the public that the city can still prohibit individuals from bringing certain types of knives in public buildings as well as the school system. They can retain that right to maintain what can be brought in the building.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any other questions or comments? All right then, do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Hendricks, second by Slonaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've passed by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 8 is Appointments. The individuals named below have been nominated for a seat on the, on a city board, committee, or commission. Each nomination is subject to the confirmation by the city council. Approval of appointments will be accomplished by one motion unless the council member so requests to take up the nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. Do we have any councilors wishing to remove an appointment from the appointments? All right, appointments will be, consist of items 8A through 8C. 8A is Alcohol Beverage Licensing Control Committee, Tara J. Tender replacing Joseph W. Vickerman for a term expiring June 30th, 2018. Item 8B is Board of Ethics, Alexander T. Henning replacing Philip R. Shields for a term expiring December 31st, 2018. And item C is Plan Commission, Dr. Brittany Keys replacing Bill Mathis for a term expiring April 30th, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve the appointments?
Come in.
Moved by DeForest and second by Slonaker. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have approved the appointments by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 9 is Counselor Activities and Upcoming Events. Let's go ahead and start with Counselor Hendricks.
Just want to remind everyone that there is a candidate's forum tomorrow here at 6:30 PM, so you can come out and learn as much as you can about our city council candidates and get out and vote on April 5th. And also, just a little reminder that I am not up for reelection. I've had a few people saying they're going to vote for me. That's not me. So read your ballots and your information thoroughly before making decisions. Thank you.
Counselor Slonaker.
Yes, I was able to attend the forum for the police chief, which was very informative, and I plan on attending an event called Brave this Thursday at 7, which is in regards to business people, weather permitting. So I think it's supposed to snow.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Kelly.
I had the pleasure of going to the Chamber of Commerce dinner, and it was very well attended, as always. Also, there's been lots of meetings this week. I think there's been a meeting just about every night, so just keeping busy. Oh, one more thing. We've had, we've moved to the, to get an office on the IronTech incubator, and it's just very nice to be able to just walk out and just walk to eat and walk back to the office. It's just really a great place. If you haven't seen it, you should stop by and come say hi.
Counselor Lubkey.
Saturday, I was at the Mushing for Meals race that was held downtown. Kind of cold, but very warm in spirit, lots of people participating. I think the front page of the Daily News today had a picture with the actual dog sleds starting the race. It was very nice and raised money for a very worthwhile program in Beloit, the Meals on Wheels program. As I sit here, I see a young boy scout up there with the, all these badges. Could you stand up, young man? I don't know who you are, but you look pretty impressive. Are you- Congratulations. I never got that many. We are, we are proud of you. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. And what's nice is that your family clearly is supportive, so I don't know if that's your sister next to you, but that's wonderful. That, that helps all of us be successful when we have support from our family, so thanks to all of you for being here. It's wonderful. Fantastic. Go get 'em.
Oh, my.
Fantastic. We'll have you run in for city council by the time you're right at 18 there. We actually, we actually have two youth vacancies right now on two of our committees. Thank you. I want to thank the opportunity that we've had over the last two weeks to receive community feedback. It's really important that the community weighs in on decisions that are made, and I really appreciate that we had our workshop on committees, commissions, and boards, and that we had a fantastic turnout of volunteers to come and share with us feedback on how they, they think our, our structure should be re-envisioned. Really appreciated their honest, frank feedback there. Thank you for, for coming to that. And then also, I want to thank all of the community that came out to provide feedback on the candidates for our next police chief. It's really important that we, as elected officials, listen to the community and hear feedback from them, and that it's not disregarded. And so I want to let you know that we have heard you clearly about issues that are important to the city, and we do genuinely appreciate and respond to your feedback, so I want to thank you for that. I also like to share that this past week I was able to attend a celebration of homeschool families in Beloit and Janesville. They had a presentation of some of the, the projects that their students have been working on, and I always make it a point to try to get to the non-traditional graduations and academic celebrations to make sure that they also too know that we, we appreciate them and they have the honor of having an elected official at their celebrations as well. So really appreciated partaking in celebrating their children's accomplishments, those homeschool families in Beloit and Janesville. I would like to thank Alex Henning for being here. It's pretty neat when someone who's about to be appointed to a commission or committee goes out of their way to, to come and be here with us, and we're pleased that you're willing to serve in the capacity on the Board of Ethics. So thank you. It's excellent. And there are lots more vacancies, so please consider applying for those. We need you for our government to function the way it does. We do rely on the feedback we receive from the members of those committees. They do a lot of the hard work of vetting some of the issues for us, doing some background work for us so that we can make better informed decisions. So please consider applying. We take those recommendations very seriously. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Counselor Kincaid.
As with many, the meeting and the police chief candidates was a highlight last week, and so we all wait with bated breath to see what the outcome is.
All right, thank you. And I think everyone's stolen my thunder. I was at many of these events, and I think we're certainly, you're making sure that we're quite busy here recently. So that's all I have tonight. So we'll move on to item 10 would be City Manager's Presentation. There is not one this time, so we'll be going to 11, which is Reports from Boards and City Officers. And this will be the big, the big ones for tonight, so we'll start with 11A.
Is a resolution providing for the sale of 1,750,000 in general obligation permissory notes, Series 2016A.
So I think we'll generally, we'll be handling all of this as one staff report? Yes. Okay.
Okay, so each year, as part of our annual capital program, we, the city borrows or issues general obligation notes and general obligation bonds to fund our capital program. So tonight, I have our financial advisor here with us, Dawn Gunderson, from Ellers and Associates, and she will walk you through the borrowing plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to kind of walk through a couple documents, but in summary, I'd like to, to speak to the financing plan. On an annual basis, you adopt your capital budget, and within your capital budget, you identify certain projects that you intend to raise proceeds of a bond issue in order to- to finance those projects. So this evening, we've presented for you, and you're considering your bond attorney has presented or prepared resolutions that are your initial authorization to proceed with this financing plan. So the agenda includes several resolutions. There's one for the promissory notes, and we'll talk about what entails, what's being acquired with those notes, but it's to finance projects that are either equipment-related or a shorter-term amortization and certain items that are not permissible under the issuance of bonding for more than 10 years. And there's one resolution to consider for that, and it's an amount of $1,750,000 or not to exceed that amount. There are several other resolutions that pertain to the bonds, and municipal bonds are issued for longer-term projects, street improvements, building improvements, the types of things that you expect to last for at least 20 years. So bonds, you're allowed to finance over a period of greater than 10 and no more than 20 years. In order to issue bonds in the state of Wisconsin, they're by purpose. So there's three resolutions, I think it's three or are there four separate purposes? I didn't bring my agenda down here with me. Four purposes, some with streets, there's some park improvements, there's some library economic development. So there's four separate resolutions of not to exceed for those specific purposes, and we've combined all the projects together that fit into those four categories. And then there's a resolution, because you're issuing bonds, cities are required to publish a notification to the public of that bond being resolution. So there's one for that, and then there's one combining that authorizes you to proceed with the sale. So a lot of resolutions, but you're really only considering the issuance of two debt issues, one a promissory note and one general obligation bonds. The two documents that have been provided to you are what we refer to as our pre-sale report. So there's narrative in each of those documents that kind of explains the statutory provisions that allow you to issue those debts, the funding sources to pay, and then there's several exhibits that are attached. Now, each of those documents has the same exhibits, and I'll take a moment to kind of walk through those with you. And please stop me if you have any questions or follow up, following my presentation with any questions. Before I step into the attachments on page five of each of these documents is our timeline. This evening, you're considering the initial resolutions. We will prepare a preliminary official statement, which will be provided to all of you. We will also schedule a rating call with standard insurers. You currently are rated on all your general obligation debt, and we intend to have this issue rated as well. And that will be distributed to the market. We'll be back here on April 18th, your regular scheduled meeting, to present the results of a competitive bond sale that we'll have that day. We'll take quotes in the morning and tabulate those and come back with the outcome of those quotes. And then we will close the bonds where you'll have your cash on May 12th. So that being said, the next page is the first exhibit, and again, both of these documents have the same exhibits, so pick up either one of them as you grab your paperwork. And on page six of each of those is a long pullout schedule. We always want to kind of give you a picture of where you are before you undertake any financing, so we refer to this as the base case. And so, starting from the left to right, it's on a budgetary year basis, we look at all your principal and interest payments on all your general obligation debt. And we identify, the city uses a lot of other sources to pay principal and interest payments. You finance tax increment district, economic development projects, so your tax increment districts are providing a source of funds to pay for your debt service. You also have several enterprise funds that are supporting some of your debt service as well, including your water and your sewer utility and your stormwater utility. Those are the largest components of those. And there is also some contributions from the library that is being applied. So we come to what, we offset all of those with other sources, come to a net debt tax levy for debt service. This is what you budget for. Now, this is declining as your current debt is being paid off, so this schedule does not include any contemplated future borrowing. We also make some predictions on your tax base, so we calculate an impact on the tax rate. Now, we do this because you do have some guidance in your budget policy on where you want that tax rate to be, as well as where you want all of your overall outstanding debt to be. So this is referred to as the base case. The next schedule is our sizing schedule. This is the listing of all the projects that were identified in your capital plan and by description, and it should be consistent if you pulled out your budget to look at that plan. And we've broken them out into the two issues. The first column is the promissory notes. The second column, then to the right, is the corporate purpose bonds. And we've tabulated the total projects to be financed and identified the cost of issuing debt. There's the rating agency fee, your bond attorney fee, financial advisory fee. We also estimate the underwriter discount. That's a bid item, so when we go for competitive sale, they not only bid on your interest rate, but the underwriter will put a bid in on that discount. So that's an estimate at this time. It'll be fine-tuned when, actually, some of these may be fine-tuned and reduced with the final outcome of the sale. So that's how we've determined the amount of borrowing needs that you have, the $1,750 on the notes and $3,280,000 on the bonds. The next large pullout schedule is bringing forward your existing debt to the far left as we looked at that previous schedule for the base case. Then we've incorporated these two bond issues or these two debt issues, I'm using bonds loosely as the issuance of debt, the notes under the kind of the blue-headed column and the bonds under the green-headed column. So that's the structuring of the issue. It's important for the city, as has been in the past, to not only look at this issue alone, we recognize that you're only proceeding with the sale of this, but you do have a long-term capital plan. So we, on an annual basis, when we're before you, we always give you a presentation so that you can see the impact of undertaking your entire capital plan, recognizing that each of those future issues will have its own consideration and its own action. But if you were to finance your entire capital plan, we want you to be able to look now at the impact of doing so on your tax rate, as well as staying within your guidance and your policy for overall outstanding debt. So again, you're only taking action this evening on the issuance of the bonds and the notes, but this schedule gives you some preliminary planning estimate if you were to undertake your entire capital plan. The last...
Go ahead.
If I could ask a quick question before you move on. Were you conservative in how much was projected for the tit increment and also for the enterprise fund contributions?
What we do for your tax increment district is we work with your staff, and we actually look at the performance of each of your tax increment districts to determine that it's available to support the debt that's applicable to those individual districts. And as well as your enterprise funds, we rely on staff to provide us the input on the support of that, but it's anticipated that the enterprise funds can support any of their share of the application.
Were you conservative in your estimates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. While we are also looking at the projected economic impact of assessed values and what we're projecting and seeing from an economic development standpoint, so we try to include as much of that as we can, but we obviously can't predict what's going to happen with the way that the state assesses our properties in five years. So we try to be as conservative as we can, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the...
Dawn, sorry, we have another question.
Yes, sir.
Good question. So I'm looking at the equalized value projection, so it seems like, you know, it's a little higher, and then, but for 2017, it's actually lower. Can you?
Right. We had a settlement with the state from our equalized value appeal that we were able to apply to the 2016 values, and the way that the state applies those back assessed values, you have to then take back half of what the adjustment was in 2016. So we show that decline in 2017 because we know that to be fact of what's going to come out.
All right, thank you. And I think I also add that we've also anticipate a couple of your tax increment districts closing in the next couple of years, so we've built those increments in there as well. And then from there going forward, we're very conservative on our projections for growth in your tax base. So the projections that are there now are, you know, making those assumptions, the rate will obviously be impacted. And the value of doing this on an annual basis is you're able to make adjustments as you move forward, whether you want to reduce your financing plans. Historically, you've done the same thing. You had a five-year plan that you've scaled back because of the impact on undertaking everything as originally identified during our declining market. The schedule on page nine, the city has a policy of how much outstanding debt they have, and this is a consideration with your rating as well, the general obligation debt burden. So once again, here, we've also have some projections on, this is your entire tax base, not just your taxable base, but your tit in for purposes of issuance of debt. Again, we're showing a decline based upon the commercial property adjustment on your values. You're allowed to have a 5% of your equalized value can have as outstanding debt, so for example, in 2016, you could have $76 million of general obligation debt outstanding. We certainly don't encourage you to go out and have that much debt, but currently, you have about $45 million of outstanding debt, which is less than 60% of your limit. We've identified all of the two issues for 16 and then the 17, 18, 19, and 20 issues as well to ensure that with that five-year policy, you're staying within your internal debt policy, which is 70% of that limit, so you could proceed with all of this based upon these assumptions of growth and stay within your debt limits. So it's a good exercise to do that. Again, we look at this every year for you. And the last schedule is the one-year trend of the 20-year bond indices over the last 12 months. You can see we aren't quite at a low. Rates are ticking up, but hopefully, we'll, they have stabilized a little bit. In the last week, there was a little bit of a decline in this schedule, but still, for the last 12-month period, we're still quite a bit below the average for the 12-month period. So we'll be back on the 18th, which isn't that far off, and hopefully, rates will have held. Any other questions that I might be able to address?
You're going to sail right away, right?
As quickly as feasible possible.
All right, do we have any questions or comments that are additional?
Thank you, Dawn.
All right, thank you. All right then, we'll call item 11A. Do we have a motion to approve 11A? Moved by Lubke, second by Kincaid. I believe, do we need a roll call vote on this as well?
Not for this one, the next sale.
The next, the actual sales. Okay, so we won't need it for this one. All right then, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 11B, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by DeForest, second by Sloniker. Do we have any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. 11C, moved by Sloniker, second by Lubke. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 11D, moved by Kelly, second by Lubke. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 11E.
Motion. I'll second.
Okay, moved by Hendricks, second by DeForest. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. And 11F, the resolution of directing public notice to electors.
I'll move the published notice.
Moved by DeForest, second by Hendricks. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Now we'll move on to 11G.
Is a resolution approving yard waste management agreement between the City of Janesville and the City of Beloit.
This is Walsh.
Okay, so in November of 2015, I received a phone call, and this is the background on this, from Joel Perkins. He is the owner of Leafland Compost Center, who said he and his wife are retiring and closing their doors effective now. And I do have to just take a minute and thank the Perkins family. They have offered and been our compost center for the City of Beloit for a very long time, more than a decade. And we knew this was coming, but I was hoping that they could hang on for another year or two. So given that, actually, staff reviewed and put together five options for yard waste for the City of Beloit, realizing we did not have very much time because our yard waste program starts in April. So November, December, January, we pretty much knew the direction we had to go, and the option that you see before you tonight was the most economically feasible for the yard waste program, and it affected residents the least. So we were kind of looking for that win-win. So the key issues of this resolution is that the City of Janesville already owns and operates a DNR compost facility. It's been licensed, that takes time. And the City of Beloit does not have a compost facility and desires to provide for the residents a yard waste program. So we felt that working together with the two municipalities, which is nothing new for us, it would be a win-win for both municipalities. The city of residents' curbside program would not change at all, and staff felt that was important, just because automation is enough of a change for residents and the rest of our program, so if at the curb they would not experience any change, that would be a good thing. So the one thing that will change is they will no longer be able to go to Leafland. Instead, they will go to Janesville. And we listened through the years to the comments by residents when they had to go to Leafland. They liked it when they had the season pass where they knew they were going to spend X amount of dollars and it didn't matter what they took. They didn't like it when they got there, and then they found out what they were going to do, hence why we decided to implement, through the fees you'll see a little bit later, the $50 pass. Residents will have the option to purchase those $50 passes, and they'll be good from April 1st of this year all the way till the end of November 30th. They can purchase the passes at City Hall Treasury, Operations Facility, Grinnell Hall, and Leisure Services. They cannot purchase them if they drive up to Janesville and say, "We are from City of Beloit, we would like to come in," and they don't have a pass. They will be turned away because they have a seasonal staff person that is not allowed to handle money. The City of Janesville, so I said, manages their compost site, we are going to tag on to that. They also have a professional company that comes in, it's Purple Cow. Our city used them after our last state declaration to come in and grind the material. So the grinding of the material this next year will be 26, 25 per ton, and it will end up being 26, 25 plus inflation in 2017. So we feel that being able to offer the residents a yard waste site to drop off and for us to haul their yard waste from curbside program too, actually provides an energy savings because we're reusing that material. So Purple Cow actually takes all of this material up to their Madison location once they've ground it, and they are making compost with it and then back into dirt, to make a long story short. So with that being said, what we are recommending is to allow the city manager to enter into an agreement with the City of Janesville, and the budget has a minimal impact. We are proposing to sell 100 passes, and I would hope we exceed that, but we kind of projected low. Is there any questions?
Do we have a motion to approve to get this on the table?
Motion. Second.
All right. It was, I'll let's say, moved by Lubke, second by Kelly. Will that work for us? Okay, let's go ahead and start with Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I sent these questions ahead of time, but I haven't had time to check my emails, so I apologize, Chris, if you emailed me about these. So the $50 pass, will that revenue generated go towards covering our invoice from Janesville for the tonnage that's deposited there?
No. That revenue will go into a revenue account within the recycling budget and the solid waste fund, and like all the revenue in both of those funds, at the end of every month, the revenue offsets the expenses, the general expenses.
Okay. And I know you said this proved to be the most economically feasible. I mean, is there any possibility that the city, I mean, I'm appreciative of the collaboration. I think it's fantastic, but I am concerned about residents having to drive all the way to Janesville, and I'm concerned about us having to drive all the way to Janesville with our gas. Is there any possibility the city might look into developing our own compost facility?
You know, that was the option that Jody and I wanted and the staff wanted in the worst way. worst way. Because we find it very inefficient to drive around the city picking up yard waste. We don't like that. But when it was all said and done, I don't know that it will ever be economically feasible to do yard waste compost facility, unless it is something quite different with that and it tag teams onto organics from the wastewater plant. And I say that because you need additional equipment. You need, and we even tried to do it as cheaply as possible, we were not allowing our staff to work that site. We were doing it all with seasonal staff, trying to do it as economical as possible. But even, we don't have a tub grinder, and to buy that alone, you are talking in excess of a quarter, more like a half-million dollars. You need a baler, you need to be able to flip it, a turner. So, and then we looked at, well, what if we didn't have that investment and all that equipment? We could actually hire Purple Cow to come here. Well, that was an additional $60,000 because they had to bring their large tub grinder, haul it and bring it, and haul the material back out. So I think staff can look at it. I do not think 2016 or '17 is the year to look at it simply because of what is on their plate with all the other changes. But you also have to have land. You need about, at least 10 acres, and be able to have it in such a location that the smell doesn't bother people.
Mm-hmm.
So there are lots of obstacles to having your own drop-off facility, and it has to be DNR licensed, approved. There are options coming down the pike. Janesville is aware of them. We are aware of them. The place that was out between Janesville and Beloit, EPA is trying to clean that up, and that might be something feasible in the future that both municipalities may want to, that we've talked about utilizing. We talked to the owner of that property three times. He came in, but they are not ready for us.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll just see what the horizon holds. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
So Leafland was a great place mainly for compost, but their hours were, I mean, they didn't have many hours that you could drop off stuff. We've been going to Janesville for a while, and it's really not that bad. I think it's gonna be, it'll be just fine. I mean, it's convenient to be at Leafland, but you didn't know if they were going to be open. And then once they stopped the seasonal pass, you're right, you didn't even know what, you know. They were really picky what they took, too. So you have to, you couldn't, you couldn't really bring stuff. You gotta have to make sure it was really cleaned. The thing we're gonna miss is their compost. So is there any, I mean, the compost they have over at Janesville?
Currently, they have everything hauled off-site. They don't even offer, as I understand it, to their residents. So they want Purple Cow to take everything, clean it out, so they can get ready for the next season. I'm not sure. I don't know if Joe and Paul are still going to have compost, and you know, that's more to come, too, because they have piles and piles of our yard waste that still has to decay, so.
We'll have compost for a few years, though.
And their phone number's still working because I tried it last week.
That's my understanding. I have to admit, I end up buying something on the order of 30, 40 cubic yards of compost from him on a yearly basis. And so, and he assured me that I would still be able to do that for a while.
Oh, good. Good, good.
It's the retirement fund.
Well, and he kind of, he said, "Well, you know, my grinder broke last year, and I got it fixed, but it's not really going to mess more than one more season," which is what he told me last year. So I imagine that's what the timing of this, of this. So, okay. Do we have any other questions or comments on this matter?
It's Chris to you and to me.
No, thank you.
For working stuff for us.
Thank you. All right. So, all right. Do we have a motion to approve the item...
Your motion.
No, we did, we do, already had that. Okay. So we've got, because we've already had that conversation. We have a lot of time to talk about it. So, okay, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 11H.
A resolution authorizing the schedule of fees and charges for solid waste collection and management.
Okay, so you have a resolution that we are hoping gets passed this evening. And there actually are three things that I wanted to talk to you about. And the two are the dumpsters. So we have a four-yard and eight-yard. But if you notice, we are only renting them for up to two days at a time. Beth will be working with us to draft an agreement for a resident to sign off on. And we thought it was very important to get the dumpster out there and get it back before their neighbors filled it for them. And that's what happens when you have a dumpster sitting out. People see it and think, "Okay, let's put stuff in it." So those things, and then the yard waste season pass, which is optional for all three of those, if residents want to use those services, we have them. But I think that's all really I have to say about the resolution.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved by Kelly, second by Kelly. Or, it said it was Loopkey, Kelly. Can I tell you, can you tell you it's been a long day? So, okay, so let's go ahead and Counselor DeForest, you had something additional to say?
Thank you. I apologize. I did not think of this question until just now. I'm looking at this cleanup fee cost to city. So what, what does that mean exactly?
Occasionally, there'll be some properties where we contract out with a contractor to perform some cleanup work for a resident that does not keep their property in compliance. Sometimes they use properties used as a junkyard and kind of a neighborhood thing. And so sometimes we have to contract out to have that property cleaned up. We have found on occasion it is helpful to have public work staff do that. So if they were going to do that service for us, they'd be able to bill the property owner for that, just like we would our contractor. So that's what that, that means.
Who would give the property owner the opportunity to do it themselves first?
Absolutely. Any type of order that goes out gives them a chance to clean up the property themselves. If they refuse to do that, then the city would step in. Only then would they step in before they're given an opportunity to remedy the situation.
If the, if the person's still on the property, we would enter the premises?
No, it's very, there are very specific circumstances that we would do this. We do not do it on owner-occupied homes or any, actually, any occupied property unless it's very clear that it's something that's a immediate danger that maybe needed to be remedied. But if there's a circumstance where it's occupied property and there's a question about whether or not it's personal property belonging to the person, we don't step in in that circumstance. We would just issue a citation and have them hopefully remedy the problem themselves. But we would go through our code enforcement process to deal with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, hearing none, then I'll call the matter of 11H. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 11, aye.
Is a resolution authorizing lease agreement between the City of Beloit and the Beloit Professional Baseball Association.
Mr. Ramsey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're here to, for consideration of a resolution approving the lease agreement between the City of Beloit, excuse me, and the Beloit Snappers baseball. As I think many of you are aware of, the Snappers organization has been utilizing Pullman Field in Telford Park ever since the existence of their team, since 1981, excuse me. Over those years, the lease has been renewed countless of times with minor revisions related to the operations and maintenance and provisions of the agreement on behalf of each party. Their previous agreement expired at the end of December 2015, and therefore, once again, provides us with the opportunity for minor revisions to their agreement and is now available for the council's future consideration. For the council's information, some of those minor changes in the agreement consist of their term of a new agreement would expire in December 31st of 2016 and provides an option to extend the lease for two additional one-year periods upon written notice within 90 days of the agreement's expiration date. Further, the association shall maintain the facility in compliance with minor league facility standards. The association shall provide the city with an annual accounting of its use and expenditures for all funds received from the city. And since the expiration of the cricket cell, the cell tower that was previously on the premises has been decommissioned, and it's sitting no longer will be receiving any revenues from that cell tower. Therefore, we have eliminated any language in the agreement which references this as a funding source for improvements at Pullman Field. Further, I think it's important to, the council's aware of that the city does make an annual contribution to the association, which is subject to approval of this agreement as well as the annual operating funds by the council. The purpose of these funds will accommodate the Snappers' cost in maintaining Pullman Field in exchange for providing baseball games and no additional charge to Beloit Memorial High School, Beloit American Legion, and Beloit College as well. This will include regular scheduled season games and playoff games as well for the preparation and maintenance of the city's softball leagues in Telford Park. Any other questions?
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Slonaker.
A second.
Second by DeForest. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I sent questions ahead of time, Mr. Ramsey, specifically about the tailgating section. And as I understand, the Snappers aren't currently using that condition. And I just wanted to check that in the case that they, they do choose to exercise that tailgating area, is there a commitment that there will be a staff there to monitor that section of the parking lot? And I'm wondering, how will that section of the parking lot be fenced off from the public? I'm just especially concerned because the skate park is right there. We have a lot of kid traffic in that area.
And I think we addressed this the last time when the, was first implemented in their agreement three, three years ago. I don't believe at this current time, the understanding I have is that they no longer have the staffing available to implement this, nor I think are the plan into the near future as well. In my discussion with Dennis Goddard, the president of the association, who's here tonight as well, if you may, want to address your question to him as well, he indicated to me at the time that they really didn't see the need for this, and is written into the proposal at this current time allows the city the opportunity to extend a letter to them stating that we would no longer make this permissible as well if we felt it was a necessity.
I understand that we have that reactive tool, but I always like to be preventative. So I just, I still would like to know, because based on this contract, they could decide next week that they want to begin tailgating where liquor is available, so.
Perhaps, maybe if Dennis would like to come down and maybe he could address that as well.
Yes.
One second. The, three years ago, when they had talked about this, there was a proposed ordinance that would allow this. There is no ordinance that allows that. So if they do want to have alcohol in the tailgating area, there would be an ordinance amendment that would be required.
Okay.
So this allows tailgating, but not with alcohol at this time.
And that was my point as well.
Which does state that in the agreement.
Yes, the current contract in Section F explicitly states that no alcohol shall be consumed in the tailgating area.
Okay, fantastic. Well, that addresses my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, good. Well, thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
All right. Counselor Loopkey.
And we talked about that. That was all settled about three years ago. And that area would be, if we would have had it, it would have been far away from the skate park, and it would have been fenced in, as I remember. But I think that was dealt with three years ago. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. We'll move on to item 11J. Thank you.
Is a resolution approving a First Amendment to Development Agreement between the City of Beloit, 200 West Grand Avenue and East Grand Avenue Development LLC for the sale of 80 East Grand Avenue and 100 East Grand Avenue.
Madam City Attorney.
If you counselors remember that about a year ago in May, you had approved a development agreement for the sale of 80 and 100 East Grand. And this is a property known as the former Carey property. We are currently under a lease with Fat Wallet. They are moving now, however. We have, Hendricks had did their due diligence with regard to the purchase of the property. And during the course of that due diligence, we learned of a section of property that they would like to include in the transfer, but we could not yet include because of some lease revenue bonds that are related to the parking lot there. So what the First Amendment does is clarifies a few legal descriptions and things like that, but it also then allows the city to transfer what we're calling the encroachment area after those lease revenue bonds have expired. So this takes care of dealing with that, the issue with the legal descriptions in that area. And then also, the, once the agreement is approved by the council and also then by the two LLCs involved in this, we would be closing within 45 days, which is a comfort given the obligation that is associated with this property with regard to the DNR stipulation that many of you recall that we had, that the property has to be, that's over the river, has a 2042 demolition date. So the city's very excited to get this, this project moving.
Yes.
Thank you. And do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Moved by Kincaid, second by Slonaker. Do we have any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item 12 would be, do we have a motion to move into closed session? Moved by Slonaker, second by Loopkey. All in favor of moving into closed session say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So we'll move into closed session. Unfortunately, the printed versions that were disseminated here today don't have this particular item, but it was published in the, on the electronic version. So do apologize for that, but we're going to be adjourning into closed session. Thank you.